The 3:30 p.m. meeting of the Bakersfield City Council is now in session.
Good afternoon. It's my pleasure to call to order the 3:30 regular city council meeting of April 26, 2023. Madam Clerk, please call to roll.
Mayor Go.
Here.
Vice Mayor Gonzalez. Councilmember Arias. Councilmember Weir.
I am here.
Councilmember Smith.
I am here.
Councilmember Freeman.
Here.
Councilmember Gray.
Here.
Councilmember Cor.
Here.
Thank you. In keeping with council's resolution, the public statements portion is now divided into two periods. There's a period for items listed on the meeting agenda and items not on the meeting agenda. Statements for items listed on this afternoon's agenda are given a two-minute time limit, 20 minutes total per agenda item. Statements regarding items not listed on the agenda are given a two-minute time limit, 20 minutes total. If you're here with written comments that are longer with your verbal statement, please give them to the clerk, who will give copies to the council. If you're here to make a public statement, please fill out a public speaker card and give your completed card to the city clerk. We ask that you mark whether you're here to speak on a matter listed on this afternoon's agenda or on a matter not on this agenda. Speakers who do not identify a specific agenda item will be presumed speakers for the non-agenda portion. Those speakers will be called during the non-agenda portion of the meeting. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers regarding items listed on this afternoon's agenda?
Mayor Go, we have not received any speaker cards for items listed on tonight's agenda.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers regarding items not listed on the agenda?
We also have not received any speaker cards for items not listed on tonight's agenda.
Okay. Thank you. And we now have Vice Mayor Gonzalez present, 3:32. Thank you. Next item, please.
Reports item 3A, a status report on the six-cycle housing element, as well as the release of the public draft.
Mr. Clegg.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Just a reminder that we have multiple long-range planning processes going in parallel. The housing element is an important one of those, and this is not the final determination. There's more to come, but our Development Services Director, Chris Boyle, will give you a status update on this item.
Thank you.
Thank you, City Mayor and Attorney Clegg, Madam Mayor, council members. I hardly ever have a script, but I have a script tonight because what I need to say, I need to remember to say it all. And that's the nature of the housing element. It's either that or, as City Manager Clegg notes, I have many different major deliverables in the works, and I need to keep track of them all. Without further ado. One year ago. One year ago about this time, the city council entertained recon consultants, my consultant, as part of a study session that was provided to the city council. Today, those efforts culminate in this presentation on the draft 2023 to 2031 six-cycle housing element now available for public review. The public draft has been available for public review since April 17th and will continue to be available until May 17th. A little background on the housing element. It's one of eight mandatory elements of the city's general plan, the only element of the general plan that is required to be certified by the Housing and Community Development Department of the state of California. Compliance with state law protects the city from litigation and maintains eligibility for state housing and grant funds, which we liberally take advantage of. Required to be updated every eight years in accordance with the Regional Housing Need Allocation Cycle, the six-cycle covers December 2023 to December 2031. The housing element update is a plan to accommodate housing units as specified by the Regional Housing Need Allocation, or RENA. But it also includes needs assessments and proposed housing policies that will support housing development for all. It includes a section on affirmative furthering fair housing, or AFFH, which analyzes the impacts of the housing element plan and issues of segregation and integration. The housing element process started last spring with several workshops to the public and a study session with the city council. There was a housing needs and priorities survey that was circulated and was available online as well in May, and then another survey in the fall, which asked the public to comment on the proposed housing opportunities sites. Inventory, that was a tool available online. All of the outreach was done in English with an availability of Spanish translation. Comments were also submitted to the project website through interviews with community leaders, service providers, developers, and the like. After incorporating feedback provided by the draft, the housing element will be reviewed by HCD, and we'll forward that after this public review. Staff will revise the documents based on HCD feedback before it goes to adoption hearings. After adoption, the housing element goes back to HCD for another review. During the outreach process, we heard the following main themes from our community: a desire for more affordable housing options and support for both renters and buyers; desire to increase the variety of available housing types, including apartments, townhomes, small units, and the like; need for increased access and services; support for building housing throughout all neighborhoods in the city; and support for transit-oriented development and density in areas where existing services were in place. The housing element examines demographic trends and housing needs to the community. These are some of the statistics that are noted in the document. It looks very familiar with the existing conditions background report that's been available to the council for some time. And again, it gives you a window into the look and feel of the general plan as we move forward with the general plan, noting that the housing element is an element within the general plan effort itself. This kind of analysis helps determine the type of housing needed in the community as well as the types of housing policies and programs to develop. The housing element built upon public outreach that was done for several previous and existing plans, such as the transformative climate communities and the Making Downtown effort and the affordable housing strategy. This slide provides a list of some of the measures in the housing element that housing element to address the community's housing needs. The housing element is the city's plan for development of new housing, but it also includes a wide variety of housing programs and actions. Themes within those programs are to provide more affordable housing options, to increase the variety of housing types, and support housing education and services. Moreover, additional themes are more housing in all city neighborhoods, support transit-oriented development by prioritizing housing opportunities near transit job centers and services, and to continue support for low-income and special-needs residents' housing. HCD requires housing elements to not only address fair housing issues, but to affirmatively further fair housing. The housing element examines fair housing issues based on fair housing enforcement and outreach capacity, integration and segregation patterns and trends, ethnically concentrated areas of poverty, disparities in access to opportunity, disproportionate housing needs, historic patterns of city development, input from the public community leaders and service providers. Fair Housing Concerns. Fair Housing Analysis identified concerns related to racial, ethnic, and economic segregation between non-white and white residents in Bakersfield, including disparities in access to education, economic opportunity, and higher rates of pollution burden. The housing element addresses fair housing concerns, including segregation and integration, access to opportunities, and vulnerabilities to displacement. One of the important takeaways from the housing plan is that housing opportunity sites will promote the mixing of income levels in all neighborhoods across the city. The housing plan does not concentrate housing for low-income households in lower-income neighborhoods, nor vice versa. The housing element also includes several programs focused on outreach, access, and affordability, and policies and programs to counter segregation and improve integration. As you may recall from the previous study session, while cities do not generally build housing, that's the function of the private developers, they do adopt plans, regulations, and programs that provide opportunities for how and where housing development occurs. Although the housing element identifies sites that are available to the city to plan for future housing, it does not mean the property owner is required to build the housing within the next eight years or any time in the future. Rather, the city is required to identify sites that are suitable for development and may implement programs to support housing development. State law requires that every housing element include an inventory of land suitable and available for residential development, based on land use designations, zoning regulations, and other factors. This inventory of land must meet the jurisdiction share of the regional housing need, called the Regional Housing Need Allocation, RENA. The RENA, based on population projections, income distribution, and access to job, was developed through the methodology of the Kern Council of Governments. Bakersfield is tasked with creating a land inventory that can accommodate 37,461 housing units in the next eight years. The RENA is broken down by household income level, based on the median, the area median income. You can see here in this table the breakdown of extremely low, very low, low, moderate, and above moderate. Since I've been in these numbers a lot, I can tell you that the city must produce 18,211 of low and very low-income residential units and 19,250 moderate and above moderate units in a breakdown of the 37,461. Cities can meet the RENA in four different ways. One, they can plan projects that will be developed in the next eight years. We can count those, and we already have a pipeline of projects that HCD will be advised of. They can meet that RENA by estimates on the number of ADUs that will be developed during that eight-year time, or by identifying sites already zoned for residential development, and rezoning sites to accommodate residential development. The list of adequate sites is called the Sites Inventory. The sites must meet the requirements by HCD, for instance, adequate density standards and lot sizes. For low- and very-low-income units, as an example, no less than one-half acre in size, proximity to services, transit, and the like. The housing element must provide information to support the ability of these sites to be developed during the planning period as well. The Sites Inventory also takes into account interest from property owners and input from the public. The slide explains how public input on housing types and locations was incorporated into the development of the Sites Inventory. For instance, we heard that people wanted a variety of housing types with more multifamily opportunities, and to allow multifamily housing on properties that were zoned commercial. The housing element plan is to rezone 231 sites to allow higher residential densities, including rezone of 144 sites currently zoned commercial or industrial to allow for multifamily or mixed-use housing where appropriate. This is a chart showing how the city will meet the RENA. What's important to note here is the city will meet the RENA requirements with a surplus of units, which is recommended by HCD. So whereas we have a requirement of 37,461, we've also provided a buffer of 14,670 units. Chapter two of the housing element outlines the goals, policies, and programs that will guide the city on addressing housing-related issues during the next eight years. There are 18 proposed programs, each with their own set of actions, timelines, and objectives. The city reports on progress towards meeting these objectives in the annual progress reports. I encourage you to review the programs and the city's objectives. The housing element continues the work the city is already doing and adds new impactful programs to address housing needs through programs and the related actions that support affordable housing, support development of a variety of housing types, and support climate change resiliency. We encourage all city residents and people who have interest in the housing element to submit comments on the draft. The housing element is available on the project website listed here at bakersfield2045.com. Comments will also be accepted until May 17 via mail or snail mail. You can also use the comment function on the city's RISE website. I'd like to take a moment to thank the Development Services staff and recon consultants, our consultant in the housing element effort, for their hard work to bring a quality effort that's worthy of this fine city for review by the residents of the city. I encourage everybody to read Bakersfield's 2023 to 2031 six-cycle housing element. I want to thank you for your time. That completes my presentation. I'd be happy to ask any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Boyle. Mr. Clegg, do you have any comments before we go to council?
I don't know. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Gray. Oh, sorry. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple things. The demographic information, more than half of Bakersfield's employed residents commute outside the city for work, and 46% of those employed in the city commute into the city from elsewhere. Is that a daily commute? Or that's just, yeah, I commute to L.A. once every month or so?
I believe that is a daily commute data, trips in and out of the city as it related to jobs.
I find that hard to believe. Could you please verify what that really is?
Will they?
Say, half the people in Bakersfield, the jobs in Bakersfield, half the people working in Bakersfield are from the county, chapter, L.A., is what you're telling me?
To Hatchbee.
Yeah. The other question I had was regarding the ADUs. You make the statement that we need adequate sites through zoning, and so ADUs are essentially allowed on every R1 lot?
That's correct. Let's talk a little bit about ADUs versus the adequate sites through zoning. The state does provide for an ADU and a junior ADU on all sites zoned for single-family residential. Actually, ADUs can be provided in multifamily zone sites as well. So yes, we are trying, we are looking to identify available sites that are zoned appropriately for housing. And at the same time, because ADUs are very topical, and if you saw our projected ADUs, I think that's rather conservative, but we're also tracking ADU production at the same time.
I guess that's my point. Over eight years, you only show 320 ADUs, and there's plus or minus 100,000 R1 residences in Bakersfield. So even, you know, 5% of those would be substantially more than what you're showing that are available in adequate sites.
Correct. I think it's a conservative number.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Gray.
Good afternoon. Going over this, I have the 25-page document versus the one that was presented to us tonight, and then from what I understand, it's actually a 72-page document that we did not receive as council members. So I just kind of wanted to, we're getting a really high-level look at this through your presentation tonight that I think goes much deeper. So there's quite a few questions that I want to have clarified that are concerning me. The first thing, the very first page, it says that we are planning this whole plan that I understand would become part of the general plan, right? This element, around the density of downtown and the high-speed rail. And that kind of caught me off guard when we don't even know if we're ever going to have a high-speed rail. So how do you plan, our city, plan this housing element when we don't even, around something we don't even know is ever going to end up here? So that was kind of surprising to me. I just wanted to bring that to people's attention. The other thing is, as I was reading this, there were things that, like on page, oh, it would be page eight of my 25-page, that the city will implement programs designed to increase equitable housing opportunities and housing access in all neighborhoods. Can you explain to me what that means?
Well, first, I want to back up and say that the city already does many of those things. We have an affordable housing trust fund. We vigorously support the creation of low-income housing throughout the community. But there are other programs that we can entertain, whether that's providing for first-time homebuyer loans. There's a long list of programs that are either proposed or ongoing. The city wishes to continue in providing housing for all income levels throughout the city.
Okay. So we're not talking about necessarily what it says in all neighborhoods doing, mixing income levels, trying to mix income levels in one particular neighborhood. Is that, is that not what this is saying, or is?
I would say that that is what this is saying.
Okay.
That the city wishes to affirmatively further fair housing throughout the community.
Right.
And so that there isn't a focus on providing low-income housing in areas that are currently low-income housing or disadvantaged communities. We're tasked with creating opportunities for residents of all incomes to live in all areas of the city.
Okay. I don't quite understand how that works. I mean, what does that look like? I know what I can afford as far as my neighborhood goes and what I can't afford. So what does that look like when trying to mix all income levels? I mean, how would the city, how would the city accomplish that?
Well, that may not be accomplishable in your neighborhood.
Mm-hmm.
But that's the task at hand, to provide a blended density of housing types, which provides for housing opportunities for people of all incomes throughout the community.
Okay. All right. So that was, that was one thing that was, and then the other thing that, I mean, we love our city. All of us do. I know, sitting here on this dais, if we didn't, we wouldn't be doing what we're doing today. But when I read about the history of Bakersfield that was included in this general plan on page 12, it disturbed me when it's talking about segregation, and you had it on one of your slides tonight, segregation between non-white and white residents in Bakersfield increased over the last 20 years. Black, African-American residents and Hispanic-Latino residents are highly segregated from white residents. Why would we put something like that in this plan that gives us a black eye as a city, when I know, again, I can only speak from my own experience, which I do a lot from this dais, but in my neighborhood, we have every ethnic group that lives around me, every ethnic group in my 91 homes where I live. We are not highly segregated. We are very integrated. So whoever is writing this stuff about our city, that disturbs me that that's how we are portraying ourselves in this plan to the state of California, to the general public. It doesn't make sense to me, Mr. Boils, that we would do that, that we would give our own city a black eye like that. So that bothered me. And then you get over to page 15. Then it talks about, "City needs more deed-restricted and naturally-occurring affordable as well-mixed, as well as mixed-income housing projects need to counter historic and existing patterns of segregation and inequality." There it is again. I mean, to me, I've talked about this the last time I was sitting on the dais, we're so focused on ethnic background that it's, it's like that's all we can, everything we look at now is through that lens, instead of a lens of, everybody has an equal opportunity to live wherever they want to live. It's shown in this city. We have mixed ethnic groups all over this city. And my question to you is, when people go out to buy a home, to rent an apartment, to rent a home, what is the number-one thing that they have to consider first?
Whether they can afford it.
Exactly. And so through natural occurrence, people are living where they live because that's what they can afford. Same thing as myself. I don't live in Seven Oaks. I can't afford Seven Oaks. So I think that this plan has become very political in nature, instead of just, let's talk about how we can help each and every person, no matter what their background is, to be able to get into a home or apartment, whatever that they can afford. That we have those programs like first-home buyers and all those types of things. I just think it needs to be brought to the public's attention that this plan goes much deeper than just housing. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Gray. Mr. Clegg, it looked like you were about to speak a little earlier. Would you like to offer a comment?
I was just going to offer a comment on an earlier question about how we define neighborhoods. And again, this are broad policy statements about, you know, having opportunity for mixes of incomes in all neighborhoods. You know, I think if you're looking at a very narrow block-by-block definition, of course, we're not going to have same types in every block. But, you know, we haven't defined the neighborhoods in this as wards, but you could potentially think of wards or, you know, sub areas of wards wanting to have a mix of different housing types throughout the city. Of course, good planning practices include transition zones between higher densities and lower densities, and those are some of the specifics that would come into play with both our housing element and, you know, some of our, you know, both discretionary and ministerial approvals on items. Are you going to have something that's 12 stories next to one story? No, that's not a likely occurrence. But that we would see higher densities and different types of mixes of housing in more areas of the city. But of course, you're going to look at commercial corridors. That's a good place to put higher densities as then you transition out to other parts of neighborhoods that may have, you know, a variety of lowering densities, you know, from those transition zones. So that's just a thought about, you know, when we use the term neighborhood, it's a fairly broad term, but of course, we do know there is a need to have different housing types throughout the city, and we're seeing that. We're seeing, you know, higher densities in some projects that are approved right now in Northwest, out on Renfro, where they're putting higher densities that are close to some of those more lower-density, single-family residential, but done in a tasteful manner that has reasonable transition zones.
Thank you, Mr. Clegg. Councilmember Freeman.
Thank you. I'd like to, well, my, I have notes all over the page. That'll be a little random. Is that not, you can't hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. So forgive me for my randomness, and I can't even read my own writing half the times. But I kind of like to concentrate on things we can do. I've talked a lot with Mr. Boyle about zoning and trying to, you know, this is the housing element, and I've been involved in a lot of these because I'm an old guy and been doing it for 40 years. We're trying to make this, we're trying to set the table so these things could be done. We can't force them to be done. We can't put a gun to some developer's head in L.A. "You got to come up here and invest $100 million. We'll shoot you." So we have to make it as easy as possible for people to build affordable housing. And I think that's how we, I think that, I don't like a lot of the language in here, and I, Ruth Gray, you know, talking about racism, whenever it was, in 1900 against the Chinese, you know, I don't know where that belonged in, in how do we move forward and do a good job to make it possible for everybody to own a home? make it possible for everybody to own a home in this community? It's irrelevant, as far as I'm concerned. But what can we do? And I think it's create zoning opportunities and—in our general plan, create more zones with multifamily, hopefully closer in. I know they're doing a lot of this now, that trying to take infill parcels—we have all these big infill commercial parcels that'll never get built as commercial. There's not enough stores to—you know, we're doing less commercial because of the internet, not more. And let the pre-zone them for them as mixed use. So when—when the owner discovers, I've only got room for five acres of commercial, but there's 35 acres left, maybe I should do some multifamily on there in these closer-in parcels, closer to the amenities, closer to the services, closer to the schools. I think we're already doing that, and we ought to really encourage that because that's—that's the way we—we fulfill the spirit of this thing, is try—that's access. That's con—I want to talk about concrete things we can do. Only look forward into the future. The future's the only thing that exists, by the way. The past is gone. Let's—let's concentrate on improving our future for everybody. And one of the other things I think we could do, I'd like us to find a way to give more power to our planning director for discretionary approvals, especially on small variances, where we had an example—I think it was Andre's or your ward, but I happen to know the people. They just wanted to build eight more apartments in an old apartment. Mr. Boyle remembered this. It's two years ago. They just wanted to add some—and this is an affordable housing area where they're going to have rentals below everybody else. They just wanted to add eight more across from that little school down there. I said, "Great." The buzzsaw they hit in Public Works—I don't think there was so much in planning was, "Oh, well, okay, we want a new water line for, you know, 100 yards up for these eight units, under buildings, whatever. Oh, there's another quarter million." And the guy said, "I only have eight units. I can only divide this." So that kills your project. Oh, Mr. Boyle got together a leaf sheet, and in what probably took you 15 minutes noodle around, "Oh, we got a way to solve that. We'll just put a different valve out there, and we won't have to..." But that was the kind of thing we need, and I think they had the discretion to approve that themselves. Well, then I hear from the guy, "Oh, well, now they want all landscaped islands in the old parking lot that doesn't have them, so they want to add another 100,000." Again, "I only have eight units." And he want—Mr. Boyle wanted those units. I don't think the units ever got built. It was—we threw one obstacle in front of them. This were infill little projects, and I would like to see us grant the power to a planning director to look at this and say, "I'm going to overrule this. You don't need to take it to council or planning commission. I just want to get eight more affordable units down here, and it's not going to hurt anybody. You don't have to do those landscaped islands that eliminated the whole project cost-wise. You've got the discretion to make decisions on some of these kinds of items." It's, Mr. Clegg, maybe it's for the future, but can we empower our people to make more decisions to solve small problems that get us those affordable units? Because right now, it's kind of one-size-fits-all, and the little developer is just going to give up. You know, when he goes in, "I want to build three units," or 10, and the cost becomes so high because we treat them like a giant tract, like a new tract, that they can't do it. I would like to say, "You could afford a home in Seven Oaks." As an example, in the city, our city is already doing a lot of this. When we built Grand Island, which was now 20 years ago, and everybody, "Oh, it's so fancy. Look at the gates, all those giant lots out there at Seven Oaks that she says she can't afford." Well, at exactly the same time, facing it on the other side, we said, "Let's build four and a half thousand square-foot lots," which our regular builders wouldn't even build south of Panama Lane. Said, "People would love to live here. We'll be bring affordable housing in the middle of Seven Oaks." We built it. We started those homes at $139.9. We sold like 100 at a month, and maybe the most expensive one was $150. You know, they were smaller, they're on 45, but you can live in Seven Oaks if you plan this thing, and our city was happy to approve it. And, you know, yeah, we had to go to planning commission for a 4,500-square-foot lot, kind of a big deal, but those things are already available. We have sites all over town where builders could build more—I won't say nothing's affordable these days with the cost of construction, okay? Everything is doubled and tripled. But certainly, a 4,500-square-foot lot with a whatever, 1750-square-foot three-bedroom home is a pretty darn nice home, and that's a lot less than an 8,000-square-foot lot with a 2,600-square-foot home for 550,000 now. It's—it's out there right now. We have to figure out how to encourage these builders to take advantage of this, and—if we can, make it even easier. We have a—a planning development committee that—I don't know how long it's going to take—we're working on a—a—a program to scale the fees. So if the small lot's going to pay less fees instead of the same for the hookups for this, that, and the big lot may pay more fees so that we can create more affordable housing. But it's the kind of—I want to ask that—if we sort of set—Mr. Boyle will get—the we'll get the land zoning and the big, pretty map that is kind of just a—a regional thing. It doesn't affect the real people. The real people are that we have to go out and do it, and we need to encourage them and help these builders go out and do this because right now, there's opportunities everywhere in this town to build smaller lots, smaller homes that are very nice, like every other city in California does, and people are just thrilled to have a—a town home in Santa Clarita. They'd die to have a town home. They don't need a single-family lot or anything, and those are regular folks, working hard, two incomes, that's all they can afford, and they're thrilled to have it. There's nothing demeaning about living in it. I lived in a thousand-square-foot condo. I thought it was—oh, that's all a young person could buy when I was 28 or whatever. So we need to do a lot more of encouraging, and I think you've—I think you've already laid the table. You're going to do a little more, and I'm sure you'll make it better, but, you know, it's—most of those opportunities are already there, and we're working on more. But I did have a question maybe you can answer for Patty's that, you know, we're—we've been saying for 50 years in every one of these general plans I've done, we're going to discourage sprawl because, well, boy, yeah, we sprawl—I mean, I—the same 6,000-square-foot lot endlessly for 1,000 miles on a huge arterial. First, it's unsustainable, it's unaffordable. The infrastructure costs way too much to do that with more people and more density. But if someone came in and had a master plan and preached warder, Eric Warder, my warden, and said, "Hey, there's 1,000 acres, but it's not really that close to the city. You can call it sprawl. We're going to build a lot of homes out here. We're going to have amenities. It's kind of a Seven Oaks-y thing, and we have all types of housing, from apartments to condos to this." I don't think that—I want you to clarify—we wouldn't turn that down and say, "I'm sorry, that's sprawl."
No, the housing element looks to generate housing stock in multiple ways. There is some dialogue as it relates to high-speed rail, but there's also extensive dialogue as it relates to existing properties, to conversion of former vibrant commercial corridors. And there's an acknowledgement that at 37,461 units, that city—city's footprint will grow. So I don't know if there's a house that Mr. Johnson, the planning director, won't process for construction that's within our sphere. So the answer to that is absolutely not. We would—we would accept that—that project and process it accordingly in an effort to generate more additional housing.
Okay. Another comment on your FMD deed restrictions. Those in the past have come in affordable housing when there was some form of government assistance, and we would deed restrict the units so that, you know, you had to sell—if—if your unit, because it had some help from the government subsidy of some sort, was a—you had it priced so a person making 120% of the median could buy it, or you had to sell to someone who made 120% of the median, okay? So to preserve that initial—that's where all the deed restrictions came during my lifetime. And I built one 350-unit thing in Pacoima and a 650-unit project in Westlake Village with all sorts of layers, but the tools we had, which was we could float tax-exempt bonds in those days for construction, so we saved some on the interest, and the takeout loans, so they would be lower. All of—the state took all of that away from us. So all the things—the tools that really worked to create affordable housing in California were removed by the state, and that's why you don't see L.A. complains all the time, "Why aren't we getting four units?" Well, they have a lot of sway in Sacramento. They took all the tools away that allowed anyone. So it's kind of the war on the working people that continues up there to add cost and cost, take all the tools away. They took away, what is it, redevelopment agency funds or a tax—tax increment. Everything we used to create affordability has been stripped away from us by Sacramento, and it makes it much harder for us because the money isn't there. And those things didn't cost anybody anything. Investors bought those tax-exempt bonds. Nobody got hurt. They still took it away. So the only thing we have going, we do have a lot more affordable land, and it's still a lot cheaper to build here than in L.A. So, yeah, we've got that going for us. But I just think we have to concentrate on the concrete things we can do to facilitate more affordable housing, and if we can lower fee structures, if we can get variances, the things that we can do here are what we should focus on as a council, because what they're doing in some other city doesn't mean anything. What somebody did 50 years ago doesn't mean anything. What I think is amazing is what are we going to do as we move forward to make it better for everybody here? So I won't talk anymore.
Thank you, Councilmember Freeman. Thank you for your investment in our community. Council Vice Mayor Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a few comments. First and foremost, I—I believe actually what happened 50 years ago does impact the community. We are living with many decisions that were made 50 years ago, and it's important to recognize that. And I—I don't see us recognizing some of the past ills of our community as a black eye. I think it's a recognition of some of those systemic issues that we have faced, especially many people in disadvantaged communities, many people who belong to historically minority communities have faced for decades, and it's important for us to address those things. And as we look towards a new plan, that we have a—a more equitable strategy moving forward, let me give you an example. This is from the New York Times, August 17, 2021, where they—where they define redlining, redlining. "The term 'redlining,' and I'm quoting this article, 'has become shorthand for many types of historic race-based exclusionary tactics in real estate, from racial steering by real estate agents, such as directing black homebuyers and renters to certain neighborhoods or buildings and away from others, to racial covenants in many suburbs and developments, barring black residents from buying homes.'" This has been policy that was established and instituted by cities, by communities, all of which contributed to the racial segregation that shaped the way America looks today, so throughout the country. So it is important for us to recognize that moving forward, we have to be very cognizant of the decisions that we make so that we are much more equitable and much more integrated. Now, let's take a look at poverty. When we have a high concentration of poverty, we know that that has a deleterious effect on families who are in poverty because they—it's a double impact. Number one, they're experiencing poverty for themselves and their families, and number two, they live within an underserved neighborhood surrounding other families in poverty. That's a double impact. There's evidence and research that shows that when we are able to build affordable housing units in neighborhoods in mixed incomes, that the likelihood of those families actually exiting poverty and moving out of poverty actually is far more likely because of the neighborhood that they live in. And so we ought to be encouraging those development practices moving forward. And so—I think that's the—the eye that we need to have as we look towards these policies and we look towards this housing element. I want to drill down specifically regarding high-speed rail and the—some of the comments that were made regarding development in downtown. Since I've been on the council, and I'll turn to ask—if we can turn to slide nine, "More housing in all neighborhoods, intensify residential densities around the planned high-speed rail station and strategic corridors and areas throughout the city." We have always, as a city, understood that our high-speed rail station area plan and any planning related to the high-speed rail surrounding neighborhood downtown always had independent utility, that regardless of what happens with the high-speed rail, that our focus was to densify downtown and that our planning would—would continue no matter what happens at—at the state level with regard to HSR. The other piece I wanted to note, because I agree with Councilmember Freeman when it comes to some of the things that we do within City Hall to stifle development, and I appreciate the—the example he provided with regard to a development in—in War II. But as we look at slide 18 and look at various different programs, the second column, it's titled "Support Development of a Variety of Housing Types," I think what we ought to include also is working internally within City Hall with various different departments so that we're all clear that—a clear of our housing goals and our development goals moving forward. It's important, for example, for us to recognize that some of our practices may inhibit densification within the downtown core, may—may actually prevent us from continuing—continuing our infill development. And so we need to really take a harder look at what some of those practices are and policies are currently so that we can accelerate some of that infill development. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Weir.
Thank you, Mayor. So I know you were out in the community gathering information. I know you—I know you've been out in the community gathering information. Can you tell me about how many local people have participated in this process?
Last—last that was topical, I think we said we had at least 2,000 individual touchpoints. In one of our surveys, we had over 800 respondents, and so that was—we're very pleased with that in that that's about, you know, 1 in 500 residents in the city was a participant in—in that particular survey. So we've been—sometimes we've had very successful outreach, and other times we've had sparse attendance, but we're—we're still in the city—we're still out there with the RISE movement and still building on that—that intake. But for the—the surveys that were called out as part of the housing element effort, the workshops and the like, about 2,000 touchpoints.
And that was representative of the entire city?
That's pretty good depth of outreach today, council member, in terms of being able to touch 1 in 500.
Well, I under—I understand that part.
Yes.
But was the representation indicative of the entire city, or was it—was it gathered in certain places?
The RISE movement went to all quadrants within the city. In some quadrants of the city, there was limited participation. As an example, in the Northwest, there is very limited participation in our—in our workshop there that was held. In the Southeast, we had much better participation by the residents there. But when you look at the pop-up events that the city attended, you know, where they live maybe wasn't as—as rigorously collected. Part of the dialogue—the last time we—we had conversation about being able to trace where people come from, our—our new surveys are including zip codes as a way to identify where people are located within the city, and so we'll be able to better report that. But I can't say that with certainty that individuals volunteered their addresses throughout all our outreach, only that we did outreach in all quadrants of the city.
Okay. Thank you. You know, a few years ago, we really didn't have our sights set on a homeless problem. And it came, and it grew tremendously, and the state was far away lacking in resources or any type of provisions that they provided for us. And since then, we've kind of taken up the mantle on that. And since then, we've kind of taken up the mantle on that, which is, to me, it's unfortunate because really the city is not, is not really prepared for that. And so now we've delved into this and we've got some success, but we're still after affordable And there are many blockades to whoever that wants to support affordable housing. The federal government's involved in it, the state's involved in it, tax credits are involved in it. It's a highly complicated thing. And it, right now, affordable housing, if you wanted to buy a $200,000 condo, that's fine, but if you want it to be affordable housing, it's like $450. It's terrible what happens. And the point of this is, you know, we've gotten into something that is very difficult. And the answers aren't easy, but we are trying for a population that are not worried about a house because they don't have one. And we're taking them in and we're trying to provide for those people. And with some success, maybe more success in the future years, we'll be able to say, you know, look at the curve is turning now. So as difficult as this has been, now we're trying to move in and change the outlook of the entire city. And I think that's, it's fine. We need planning. We need to have direction. We need to have goals and all that's combined there. But what, what really needs to happen is to be able to take those energies and practices that we're using on homeless and somehow transform that into affordable housing for the city. And I would, I would think that that would come. I really don't think that we are designed to do that. So somebody else would have to do that for us and we'd have to pay them. But we want to do it objectively and straightforward. And we want to do it to where all that can benefit will benefit, to whatever degree that is. And we can do that. I'm sure we can do that. But we need to be careful of our wording and how we are discussing these situations because there's some wording in these plans that are very sensitive to me. And they shouldn't be in the programs that we're writing because they mean something different to different people and we don't need that. So I would try and express that we be careful about the meaning of what we're doing and what we're trying to say. Because at some point in time, the other meanings are going to start coming out. And that will not be a positive for the city. And I'm not being very specific, but I hope you understand what I'm saying. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Weir. Councilmember Arias.
Thank you, excuse me, thank you, Mayor. This entire conversation frustrates me deeply because I think, on one hand, I think it's important that staff continue to do what it does with this plan, which is to acknowledge the history of this community, acknowledge the history of the city, and recognize that the very tools that are included in the housing element and the types of land use, planning and policies that, you know, folks like you and I, who have sat on this dais and have had the privilege of representing the city, that the decisions that we make by pressing "I" or "yes" on our screens have, whether it's unintentional or intentional, have created disparities within our own community. There's a wonderful tool called CalEnviroScreen that's been put together by the State of California. I wish I could turn around my screen, but if you take a look at it from home, it's shaded in different colors. And on the east side of Bakersfield, there are two colors primarily, orange and red. Red meaning that there is the greatest burden of pollution, of all types of pollution, whether that's lead that could be found in your house, that your children might be vulnerable to. That means older types of systems to transport your water that could contaminate to a further degree, the type of water that you and your family are drinking. That means less access to transportation, clean transportation. That includes access to childcare facilities that you can afford for you and your family. That means, you know, better streets. We're always talking about creating better streets for our community. And you look to the other side of the city, right? And you see two different other shades. You see shades of yellow and shades of green. And you ask yourself, how have we gotten here? How have we gotten to a city where there is such significant differences in the infrastructure and the development and the health and outcomes of residents that both call Bakersfield their And it is because of the decisions that we're making today. And I think it is so imperative that we, as councilmembers, do our research. I think it's also important for us to acknowledge that I don't think any one of us are the ones who are, you know, making these decisions in the 40s, in the 50s, in the 60s. But we are the ones who are representing the families who are dealing with the repercussions today, right? And it's important that we continue to acknowledge that history because it is going to allow for us to make a more equitable and safe and better Bakersfield. I just really quickly want to share, because I want to share one last thing, because it's important for us to verbalize some of that history. And I don't think that we should mince words because there is language out there that has been codified in the past, that specifically has led to this type of disparity in our community. I just want to read one of them. So there are, there's a history of racial covenant restrictions where certain track maps that were made years ago that specifically restricted different types of races and folks of different types of backgrounds from purchasing a home and residing in particular parts of our community. So I just want to read one really quickly to the record. This comes from the Oleander Community. I won't, I won't name what the property is or which family owned it at the time. But if you scroll down, and I can share this with the entire council, there is a certain section, subsection F, that says, "No persons of any race, other than the white or Caucasian race, shall use or occupy any building or any lot, except that this covenant shall not prevent occupancy by domestic servants of different race domiciled with an owner or tenant." That is the type of language that has led us to this moment. And that is the type of language that we must continue to acknowledge, whether it makes us, you know, uncomfortable or not. That is what we are here to do. And I just want to say thank you, Chris. I think it's important that we continue to acknowledge this important history as we continue to lead our city forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Arias. Councilmember Cor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, staff, for preparing this and presenting it to us today. I wanted to uplift something that's mentioned in the housing needs as well, about our population growth. And Bakersfield has increased by more than 60% in 20 years. And that's more than three times the rate of growth for the rest of the state of California. And I think that's very impressive and it's something to know as we're thinking forward about the housing plan and what it will include in accommodating that growing need. And we are already the ninth-largest city, and I have hope that we will continue to increase in our ranking. In being a city planning student, I got to study a lot of different general plans, a lot of different housing elements. And I appreciate and want to also echo that it means a lot that our city staff has prepared this document and tells the story of our communities and the histories of our cities. And it tells the story of why, of why a housing element is important. Not only is it required by the state of California by law, but it's what we add that really tells us the story of where we've come from and where we're going and why we're doing what we do. And now I do want to echo some of the questions about the how, how we achieve some of these things. On one of the slides, we're encouraging different types of housing to meet our community's housing needs. And I'm very encouraged by the different types of housing that are listed. In terms of studying, and I direct my question at Chris, Christopher Boyle, how are other housing elements or how do housing elements accomplish the how we recommend and encourage the development of these varieties of housing? Is there, that's my first question. Will there also be recommendations on how we achieve that with developers?
That's a broad question. I'll try and provide a narrow answer. When you look at the city's housing stock, there was a period of time where the city built a broad, broad brush of housing types. Councilmember Freeman notes that period of time. You can drive through other components of the city where you do see condos and the like. But for one reason or another, the market in the city has largely provided single-family residential homes and apartments over at least the last decade, from my observations. We did very well in last year when we built 2,552 units combined and was the number one builder in the state of California during the recession. But that was almost, almost 1,000 units of multifamily at the same time, a very nice year. But what we're, what we aren't building, and it's built into our ordinance as well, we have minimum 4,500 square foot lot sizes. We're not building single-family homes on smaller lots. We're not building condos. We're not building what is commonly known in California as the missing middle. And those are lost opportunities to build residential units for varying income types and maximize our densities across, across the community. So that's one of the strategies that we see as an opportunity here in the city of Bakersfield in terms of providing additional density. We also have commercial corridors that have, you know, underutilized or vacant properties today that lend themselves to placing residential units in close proximity to both transportation and to jobs. It's time we started to look at those parcels in the map and provide for repurposing them. And you do that not with, because the size of the lots, it's very difficult to envision single-family residential subdivisions on those properties. So we want to encourage greater opportunities for rental units of all sizes, from studios all the way up to four-bedroom units. We want to encourage more single-family residential construction. And we want to do that across all breadth and scopes of lot sizes, right down to very small condominium airspace units to traditional single-family residential lots. We're challenged to build 37,461 units in eight years. And I don't want to say that we left any of our tools on the table in trying to do that. That's a tall order. And so consequently, the city has done as deep a dive as we can as it relates to finding those units and the land to put them on as part of the six cycle.
Thank you. My question is also kind of to lead me into my next one of echoing some of the sentiment or comments about how within city staff we coordinate when new development is happening. For example, a suggestion from a developer or a few was they've seen in other communities where the city departments, when a project comes in, kind of every department is in the room and then the project is discussed within that room. And they can kind of work out some of the issues, just, you know, in one collective meeting, whether it doesn't bounce back between department to department. Is there room to build, to explore adding some element of that? Is that a conversation already happening at city staff? Is there, I guess I'm thinking more about how do we ease the process of developments moving forward? And if that can also be something that is added to our housing element as specific text of also operational methods?
I think it's already happening. I think those dialogues are happening in the here and now. We don't have a formalized, what would be called a preliminary project review process or application that's completed on a regular basis where a committee meets and looks at ongoing projects. I've been in communities where that happens. Those communities usually collect a fee to do that because there's staff time incorporated in that. That's a decision point in a fee schedule. But with our, with our online permitting process right now, it's easier to have interdepartmental touchpoints because you can see where plans are. There are not paper plans that are being passed around. We know where each, you know, who has completed their review and has not. But I see the value in a preliminary project review. It allows the various departmental stakeholders to get in that room and to provide comments early on in the process and allow a developer to take those comments and incorporate them as part of a formal application. And there's value to the city in doing so.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Boyle. And I would just add a couple of points to that concept. I think we're interested in having that level of coordination and collaboration. There's more than one way to get at it, but having a preliminary project review, thanks for the title, Chris, I like that, I think makes a lot of sense. But in some instances, depending on the size of the project, it's not always going to make sense. Sometimes that might actually slow a simple project down. But I think as we've thought about this, we've talked about the economic development department having a business success team that identifies specific employees that are going to help shepherd projects through the development process. And we want to create a culture where, you know, good process is happening for all projects, sized big and small. But I think some tools we may use, you know, more for bigger projects and maybe not overcomplicate some of the smaller projects. Another thought is that, again, we do think especially big-ticket items or major red flags would be raised in a meeting like that. But I just want to make sure that it's understood for council that it's a very iterative process. There's no way we could address all issues in one initial meeting, but we could make sure we're taking any big-ticket items off the table or on the table and set the stage for notable success and expediency through the rest of the process. And then lastly, and Mr. Boyle didn't respond to this, but I will. I feel the housing element is much more of the policy document as for land use and not necessarily the operating document. And we're very supportive of that practice. And again, we've talked about how to operationalize that through some of our economic development efforts, but I would be a little bit reluctant to put that in the housing element. But there may be other internal policies that we do document it so that it is in writing and we've made that commitment. In fact, as we've talked about trying to shop our most business-friendly city in California, we want to be able to say, these are all the things we'll do for businesses and have it documented that, you know, something like this. And we're still putting some of those pieces together of what does our business-friendly process look like? And we could put it in something like that, maybe more so than in the housing element.
I agree that the housing element is one tool in the city's development tool belt, per se. The housing element is one tool in the city's development tool belt, per se. It's one element within the general plan. We have opportunities to explore strategies like a preliminary project review or a development review committee as part of our land use component of the general plan. And so since that's an ongoing effort right now, we appreciate the direction and the comments.
Thank you, and thank you for this. I'm incredibly encouraged by our efforts to achieve affordable housing in our city. Thank you, staff.
Thank you, Councilmember Cor. Councilmember Freeman.
One last comment. And I think it more is in the general plan, but we don't talk all the time, so I'm going to take the opportunity here to ask you a question. Is there a way in our general plan, laying out the uses, that we can, one thing, can we design the uses almost like we are, let's say we take Ward 7, and we look at all that land hadn't been developed yet, okay? It's mostly farming, but it hadn't been developed yet, and it's disappearing really fast, that we could put that in a general plan with land uses and zoning that really is kind of a master plan that we did subtly? It doesn't have all the protections of a specific plan, but, you know, could we, can we sort of master plan it by, "Here's where our density, here's where commercial, here's where," you know, it really looks kind of like a master plan, here's where our parks will be? That's one question. And could we at least write into the general plan the ability of the city to perhaps do one or two specific plans ourselves? Cities have done this before, you know? When we wait for developers, there's only one in this town that ever did, ever! That was Castle &amp; Cook. No one has ever done one. Maybe there's one in the northeast that never got built, but could we, since, could we take the lead, maybe one or two places and where we feel the most growth is or it's most important, and at least write the ability to, whether we do it or not, but sort of in our general plan, that the city can take the lead since nobody else is doing it and saying, "We need to plan this area." And it's a big, you know, with the landowners, it's hard, it's political, they all argue, "Who gets the commercial? Who gets this?" You know, I've been through that, but at least put it on the list of things we're seriously considering because you're never going to get planning if we don't have developers who will do it. If the city doesn't say, "Well, then maybe we're going to do it because we want this community to work," and little 40-acre tracts aren't ever going to make that happen. It's not going to happen.
Thank you, Councilmember. I have three comments specific to that. There is a unique opportunity with the general plan update because currently the city has a joint general plan, a metropolitan general plan with Kern County. And so consequently, the long-range planning in our sphere is a joint effort, whereas the new Bakersfield general plan will be a singular effort as it relates to land use planning within the sphere because it no longer be a joint general plan effort. The second component as it relates to specific planning would be that we would need a willing partner. Cities typically aren't going to unilaterally provide for development standards or a specific development schema within a private property owner's property without some willingness on the part of those property owners to engage and embrace some long-range planning ethic to be applied towards our property in the near to distant future. And those people may be out there, so...
Yeah, we haven't really tried, and it will be hard here, but I've seen, San Jose did. I've seen people do it. And if you're, so if you could, great, but if you can't, can you sort of do some master planning through your zoning and general plan land uses anyway so that everybody can't build 6,000 square foot lots forever?
I think I can say with relative certainty that we will do at least something like that within the general plan's sphere of influence moving forward, yes.
Thank you, Councilmember Freeman. Another request to speak vice mayor.
Move to closed session.
We're adjourned to closed session. Reconvening, the 3:30 city council meeting at 5:34. Madam City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. There was only one item in closed session tonight. That was Item 4A, and there is no reportable action. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, the 3:30 city council meeting stands adjourned at 5:34.